My name is Connie Burcone and I'm a licensed social worker for Lake County Council on Aging. I've been a social worker for 30 years, worked with seniors for 40 years. I don't know, I started out as a lifeguard at Euclid Beach Park. Does anybody remember Euclid Beach Park? I'm not quite old enough to have gone to the amusement park, but I had my first exposure with seniors when I was 15. They thought I was much older, so I could tell a lot of stories with that. Some of them not appropriate. I work for the Lake County Council on Aging. We are nonprofit. I am not selling anything. I'm not sure I could sell anything. The Lake County is in its name because we service Lake County residents only, 60 years and older. I'm also in the medical reserves for Lake County. So my passion has been seniors and right now I'm in my dream job because I can do what I've done my whole life and get paid for it, so it's wonderful. The council started way back in 1965. The late Ruth Dunsmore started what they call the Senior Citizens Council. And that was a predecessor to the Lake County Council on Aging. So we're celebrating 51 years. And the Older Americans Act that passed in 1965 helped protect seniors, stay in their homes, supporting aging in places, what we do. So we provide a lot of services to keep people in their home as opposed to going to a nursing home. And even, no matter where I've been, whether it's Cuyahoga County, Lake County, anywhere I've worked, that's always been the goal. So in 1970, a group of senior advocates led by late Ruth Dunsmore worked to establish an organization that would ensure seniors would have a voice and be cared for. In October of 1972, she was the executive director and she started, like I said, the predecessor to the Lake County Council on Aging. In 76, 1976, the Lake County Commissioners Agency moved to the third floor in Paynesville and also the Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging expanded the council's delivery system by enabling access to federal funding sources. These are some of the board members. And in 1972, Senior Citizen Services Levy, that was a hard one, was placed on the ballot and that levy is what generates the funds for the council and the senior citizens in Lake County. Eventually, the Council on Aging moved in Menner on Station Street. And then every five years, the Council on Aging, the senior levy is on the ballot and that passed, which created even my job the last time it passed. Oh, I did want to warn you that I do have some funny stuff in here because I feel that laughter is the best medicine. And Betty White is one of my favorites. So the Council on Aging has a lot of core services. They have the social work department. As you can see, some of the services here. ADRC, which is the Aging and Disability Resource Center. And they have what? Information and assistance. So if you do need help or you find yourself needing help, and maybe it's not for you. It could be for your neighbors, or a sibling, or a friend, or somebody. And I tell people that a lot of times that I probably need to talk to the children of seniors because they're usually the ones doing all the work. I know both my mom and dad passed and my mother, father-in-law within like two years. It was extremely stressful. I knew the Lake County Council on Aging existed, but I did not realize all they did. Our database is massive, so I'll get into it in a little while. But even with scams and fraud, I'd rather have somebody call the Council on Aging and say, "Hey, I need a handyman," or "I need snow remover," or landscaper, or somebody. And then you know you're getting a legitimate business because so many people get scammed. And the first thing the ADRC does is you call in, you're going to get sent over to information and assistance, and then they're going to determine what you need. And then depending on it, you're going to be sent over to one of the other specialists. So the options counselor is somebody that will help you get senior living, assisted living, nursing home help, any of that, any kind of living for seniors. And that's what the options counselor does. Our benefits assistance is a OSHA counselor. I also am a OSHA counselor. And what they do is they'll help with Medicare, Medicaid. There's low-income subsidy programs that people don't realize where you don't have to pay your Medicare Part B deductible. A lot with Medicare and Medicaid that people don't realize. And if you have a question, if you find yourself saying, "I wonder if I could..." Call in. It's all free resources for seniors in Lake County. And like I said, they're all OSHA counselors also. So some of the things that they do are in-home support, transportation, nutrition, home repair, socialization. We have all kinds of things for seniors in our database. And if we don't do it within the Council on Aging, we will send you to who does. And that is one of the best things because we go through thousands of people that get the resources and why shouldn't ever... My job is to go within the county to everywhere I can and tell them what's available to them. And make them, you know, I believe knowledge is power. So if I'm going to give you as much knowledge as you can, you could use it for yourself, use it for your neighbor down the road if you should need it. Very important to at least know what's available to all of you. And it's your taxpaying money that's going towards it. So you can see some of the savings programs. We do heap applications. There's extra help for Part D, which is if you're low income. There's even more and more help if you're low income. The OSHA I just spoke about. We also do applications. We have people that go to a lot of the senior centers that'll do the heap applications. You can see the income level there. And that will get you help with your electric and gas bill. Then we have the social work department. So they call in and if you need an assessment, someone like myself, I have also clients aside from doing outreach. And you call in, you'll be assigned to social worker. The social worker calls you. We go out to your home. We do a full assessment. We also let you know a lot of the services that are provided. We assess what you might need and then we set it up for you. So it's real easy. You can see all the services and service hours that we have. We are the most comprehensive in the state, the Council on Aging, because we all are licensed social workers. Some of the other councils on aging don't have licensed social workers, but we do. And like I said, we do a whole full assessment. We can even do a home, you know, look at your home to see if you need grab bars, ramps, anything that's needed. Western Reserve Area Agent, that is a tough one for me. Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging, been saying it my whole life, but still can't. They'll put in grab bars for you. So there's also Lifeline that helps with electric and gas. And there's a variety of services. You can see them all here. I'm not going to go through every one because I might be here a long, long time. We also have mental health case managers. We all know and can tend to those issues. I'll talk about those in a little bit. Adult Protective Services, home healthcare, local hospital, nursing. I mean, the social work department is busy, very busy. To know that help is in your county. My sister lives in Cuyahoga County. I wish she lived in Lake County. She's 15 years older than me. I worry a lot about her. She's never been married and, you know, a lot of people are alone. So I have run into quite a few people that said, "Hey, my neighbor needs this." Or, "My friend needs this." So the non-medical income in-home care services are, we visit. Some people aren't real comfortable with taking a shower with nobody there. They're afraid of falling. Most accidents happen in the bathroom. So the non-medical income in-home care services, I can see this is how my tongue is going to be tied tonight, so I apologize for that. Depending, and I do have the sheet here. Depending on your income, if you qualify, it's free. And it's around $2,430 of income a month. So if you're that or below, you can have these services for free. And they come in, they'll do hygiene, they'll help you take a shower, or just be there for a shower. You do have to be 16 and over. You do have to be a Lake County resident. And this is the income level, but I do have all of this information in a paper copy. So everything I talk about is in a paper copy that you can grab to take home with you. Meals on Wheels is one of our biggest things. We service a lot of people in Lake County. And these folks, the meals are delivered by volunteers. I also have a volunteer sheet here. We're always, if you're bored, you're retired, you know somebody that needs some extra, you know, something to do, we welcome any volunteers. We have volunteers that help out with a whole variety of things from paperwork. And Meals on Wheels are something that they do. They spend two hours a week delivering meals. And we also have Meals on Wheels for animals. So a lot of seniors will feed their animals before they feed themselves. So we do have animal meals on wheels, which I think is really neat, which is the pet meals on wheels. And we have Blizzard bags. We have produce bags. We have locations where we have nutrition sites. They're in Paynesville at the Extended Housing, Madison, Wickliffe, and Eastlake. So we have congregate meal sites. So nobody in Lake County should ever go hungry. If someone, unfortunately, we have a huge homeless problem. But between the churches and the congregate meal sites and a lot of the different meal services, the produce pickup, the lunch meals that are served all over the county, nobody should go hungry. So if you do know somebody that is looking for a meal, and these are our sites, Willowick, Madison, Paynesville, and Wickliffe, you can go in, you can have a meal, especially if someone's hungry. Meals on Wheels are done on a donation basis, so a letter is sent out once a month to everybody. It's $2.50 a meal. If you can pay it, you pay it. If you can't, we don't go after you for the money. So these are our grocery programs. We have volunteer grocery shoppers. If someone needs somebody to go shopping for them. We also have friendly visitors. There are personal shoppers. We have the commodity food box, the fresh produce, the mobile food pantry. So if you just want one thing, I have a lot of folks that are, know they're having a knee replacement. They just need Meals on Wheels for a month. And that's fine. We do ask that you, you know, have them for a month. Because we have volunteers, everything from the food bank is put in place. Meals are ordered ahead of time. But if you know you're having surgery, set something up. Even the homemaker program that I'll get into next, or the personal shopper. Friendly visitor program we have, where somebody comes and visits. We also have Lifeline does, remember the old pen pal? Well, they do it with a phone pal, where some people are very lonely. So they get a phone call twice a week, have somebody to talk to, or they get a visitor once a week. So there is a lot of available resources for people. The homemaker program is also done based on income. It is on a sliding scale in that paper. If you want to know the sliding scale, it's there. And these are kind of the basic guidelines of less than $110,000 in assets in the income for one and two and three-person household. We also have the help program. That's a health equipment lending program. So we lend out walkers, wheelchairs, bedside commodes, canes, all of that. And if you have something you can donate, we also take donations of any of that equipment. I know with my parents, I had all kinds of different equipment that, what are you going to do with? You know, so we do take slightly used. We don't want slightly used incontinence supplies though, but we do take, we do take incontinence supplies also. And I do go out to my clients and bring incontinence supplies if someone needs them. And I just spoke a little bit about the volunteer department. We have a lot, a lot of volunteers and we're very grateful to have them. They do a lot for the Council on Aging. They do the Meals on Wheels. Whether you can adopt a route, grocery shopping program, the friendly visitor program. This kind of looks at the revenue of where all of the money to the council, your taxpaying money goes. I don't particularly like pie graphs myself because it's, you know. Vial of life is very important. I've gone to every fire and police station in the county and talked with them. And in conjunction, I also do some safety programs with Willoughby Hills Fire Department. The vial of life is really important. If you don't have a vial of life, please take a paper. All you do is call into the council. We mail one out to you. It is a red packet that's a magnet. Inside is where you put all of your, write down all of your medications, all of your diagnosis, anything that's wrong with you. And the firemen are begging that everybody that's a senior puts one of these on their refrigerator because they know, and the police know, to look on that refrigerator. Now also, they've added to it that if you are a DNR and you do have DNR papers, I would suggest making a copy of it and putting it with your vial of life. Now, as you can see, that's a little pocket that all of that information goes in. Because if the paramedics, God forbid, need to come to your home, unless you have a hard copy of your DNR papers, you are a full code. And I can tell you, being in nursing and social work in nursing homes and working in all those, you really don't want the paramedics to do CPR on a 90-year-old. He told me not even a 55-year-old, which is me. So I'm like, "Thanks a lot." But, so they're encouraging everybody to do this. And when you call in and they send it out to you, in one year, the Council on Aging sends you a reminder to update all of your information, your medications. This saves valuable time. And I don't know about you, but every time you go, "What medicines are you on? What do you, what is this? What do you have? What surgeries have you had?" All of that. Here you have it on paper. Make a couple copies. If you have kids, nieces, nephews, whoever, your power of attorney, put one in your vial of life on your fridge, keep a copy with you. Then you don't have to go through all of that. And it really saves some valuable time for the firefighters and the police. And I just learned too, a couple weeks ago in going with them and the detective, is that you could call the BMV and give them your next of, you know, not next of kin, but like your power of attorney, or whoever's in, you know, whoever you have to speak for you, even if it's not a power of attorney. And the police said that they are not going to go through your car in an accident and look for your phone to look at because they have the ICE, is that what you just said? In case of emergency on your phone? But they said they won't go looking through your car in an emergency. But they do go on the BMV from your plate and it will tell you who to call. So I didn't know that. So I'm going to have to do that. And this, here's another one of my jokes, funny stuff. So that's a lot. Anybody have any questions on what the Council on Aging does? I mean, our database, if you need home healthcare, anything you can think of. If you find yourself saying, "I need," call the Council on Aging, get a number. Either one of our services, or we're going to lead you to who can do it. And I think that's super important and it is very helpful in this day and age with all the scams and frauds going on. So we're going to talk a little bit about emergency preparedness. This is per FEMA. Have a basic emergency supply kit. Now, I'm in the medical reserves and we have a to-go bag. What I might have in my bag might not be what's important to you, but you do want to have some of these things in your bag. And this is all written down, so you don't have to, you know, memorize any of this. But you'll see some of the things that, you know, we saw what happened down in Saint, or Saint Palestine, in East Palestine, Palestine, Palestine? Down in Southern Ohio with the train derailment. We had one in Menner many years ago. We had a tornado a few months back. Know where your items are. Don't have your pills in 10 different places. Don't have your important papers in all over the place. These are some of the things that they suggest per FEMA that are in your bag. But make sure you're, if you're in immigrant, immigration papers, living wills, DNR papers, power of attorney, all of these things. I don't know if you have a safe and maybe you have them in your safe, but keep them all together. Know where your items are. It's really important. You never know when there's going to be a chemical spill, or emergency, or anything. It could be anything, especially in this day and age. It really could be anything. Know where your items are. Have them all in one place. Know where you could grab something. Now, people that are in apartments, maybe some of you are, there's a fire door. And they tell you to stay in place until you're told to leave, okay? Those fire doors are good for, I think, up to like six hours or something behind those fire doors. And they keep you safe. But if you do have to leave, are you going to disappear without your license, your anything? Your medications, your glasses, your contacts, your living wills, your driver, I mean, all of this. So know where your items are. Don't, and you do want to put a waterproof bag in there. Because if it is something such as a tornado, thank goodness we don't have hurricanes and a little bit of earthquakes. We had a couple of those. But know where your stuff is and make sure it's all in one place, especially if it's not something you use all the time. You know, marriage documents, marriage license, all of that. Most people put them maybe in a safe or something. Know your comm to your safe. Maybe write it underneath something in case sometimes, like when we get all shook and in a flurry, we can't remember a comm. So make sure you know where all of your items are. And don't forget your pets, because if you do have pets, you're going to need food and water for them also. So whether you're at home, this, we did a whole training on this. So whether you're at home, at a friend's house, at church, at a store, when you go in, take a look where the exits are. We have fire floods and we have this thing as active shooter now. Is it disturbing? Absolutely. Is it scary? Yes. And unfortunately, I guess Cleveland has gotten worse than even Chicago now. Be aware of what's around you. See something, report it. Also know where your exits are, everywhere you are. So you see there's an exit here. You know, I walk in, I know there's exits here, here. You see where things go. Make sure you're not running into a closet. Although, we had to do that when we did training with the FBI, that the closet was the only thing in the room, so they said, "That's where you go and hide." We went into a little more, you know, grabbing the person where to stand, grabbing guns, which is way more than the average person needs to know. However, just be aware that all of these things are happening. We have a lot of crazy, crazy happening. Know where your exits are. Know where you can escape. Know how to get out of a situation or a room. You know, unfortunately, it's the anniversary of even the shooting down in South Carolina. Even in a church, you need to know you're not safe anywhere, unfortunately. So scams and frauds are one of my passions. They started a long time ago. I don't know if you want to read all this, but I did not realize how long ago these started. 300 B.C. So you can see the fraud that happened then. Planned to empty his ship, shell the corn, keep the loan. His plan backfired and unfortunately, he was chased off the ship and drowned trying to escape the people that he was scamming. But this is how long ago this was. I mean, scams and frauds have been around a lot longer than we could imagine. It's hard to believe, 300 B.C., so we can't think that far back. But I guess as long as there's been humans, there's been scams and frauds. And then we went into the imaginary prince, where a Scottish general in the army, a legitimate impressive war chief, he also boasts of the fact that he had conquered a small island and became its kizik or prince. The land in question was called Poyas, Poyas? And it was completely made up. He promised to build, this is like buying swampland, where they sell you swampland and even in Florida, I've heard of that. People flock to him buying houses that didn't exist. Exchanging sterling and fravocated currency. So look how far back. And this is one to, this was interesting and I realized this, but I didn't look at it as a scam, where he steals the world's most famous painting and you can see why he did it. And then he sold all the fakes to the underground collectors, so. And of course, everybody's probably heard of the Ponzi scheme. Promising 50% of profit return. There's been a lot of Ponzi schemes where people get caught up in this. The people that do it usually get caught, but as you can see, this goes back to 1920. So it's kind of scary. So what do you do about scams and frauds? Well, robocalls, don't answer your phone. Do not. Let it go to voicemail. If it's important, you can listen to your voicemail. And a lot of times when you call the number back, it's not even a working number. As a matter of fact, I got a scam call from my own number and name. Popped up on my phone. So you want to, you can report the calls to Attorney General's office. You'll see a lot of different, gosh, there's so much that we could be here all day. But don't ever give out your personal information, not your social. They are so manipulative. They are masterful. I've never seen, and I have been, gotten all these calls and they're masterful in how they talk to you. Now, you can go on the do not call list, and I know a lot of people say that doesn't work, but it does help. It does help because I've done it. And it does help with the phone calls. All of, again, all of this information is in on paper for you to take with you. So ProSeniors is one of the, they offer legal assistance. I don't know if anybody's heard of ProSeniors. If you're ever in a situation where you need, you're 16 and over, you need assistance, ProSeniors is a group that is very, very helpful. So anybody with a suspected fraud, you can call the toll-free hotline. You can also contact the Special Committee on Aging through the Senate. And what, if you get, if you get a phone call and you hang up, if you do get scammed, call the police. Attorney General, Federal Trade Commission, again, all these numbers are up here. But there are so many scams, so I'm going to give a couple examples. So I had a resident of mine came down to my office, said, "I got a boyfriend." I said, "Really? That's wonderful. Where'd you meet him?" "Online." I said, "Now be careful. You never know." "Oh, no. He's a great guy." So a couple months go by, I see her buying calculators. I said, "What are you doing with the calculators?" "Excuse me." She says, "Well, I'm sending them to my boyfriend." Well, then I started investigating a little bit and I realized that in Africa, which is where the calculators go, that's how they smuggle diamonds back to the United States. And boy, when you go through scams or you go through scams with people, you certainly find things out. Okay, so she says, "I'm moving out." She tells the manager, "We're in a HUD building. I worked out in Parma in a HUD building." Those buildings fill up apartments so, so fast. So she says, "I'm moving out." So once you give up your apartment, it's filled before you actually truly move out. About a couple minutes after midnight, she tells me all of her social security money that was supposed to be deposited, she lives paycheck to paycheck. This is a low-income building, was taken. Okay, so she reports that. So then she says, "He's supposed to be here tomorrow morning." I said, "Okay." She's moved all her stuff out. She's like a little kid in the front of the building, you know, waiting for mom and dad, or waiting for someone. The guy never showed up. The next place I visited her was on Fairmount in a homeless shelter. It's not a joke. She fell for the romance love. "I love you. I'm going to do for you. Oh, the woe is me. I was almost shot. I was this." But I'm going to be there. She fell for it all. Hook, line, and sinker, and then she was homeless. It's bad. Tech support scams. This one's a really bad one. I had a resident come in. They said, "I needed help on my computer. Some guy showed up on my computer. He needed iTunes cards." She went to CVS, got iTunes cards. I got the iTunes cards back from her. She was a very, very religious person. And when she came back and said, "No, you're a scammer." He sent pornography to everyone and all of her contacts in her computer. So you can't imagine how embarrassed. She was horrified, crying and horrified. Very religious lady. The grandparents scam. This one's so bad. This one with accidents. The problem is, is artificial intelligence. You've all seen this in the news. AI is what it's called. They, because of all our kids and grandkids are online and on all these social networks, they pick up their voice. So it's actually your child, grandchild, great-grandchild, niece, nephew. It's their voice that calls and says, "Grandma, grandpa, I need help. I need money." It's a scam. So one of my friends, his mom is from Latvia. And they called her and said, "Grandma, I got in an accident. I need money." She said, "This is a scam." And they're like, "What? No, grandma." They're like, "I'm from La-" you know, nobody calls me grandma. They call her, "Oh, mom." And that's how she figured out that it was a scam. Otherwise, she would have been down that road with her grandchild's voice in a scam. The government impersonation scam, unfortunately, only a couple months ago. Went to a lady's house. She thought we could help. We really couldn't. She was called by the Department of Justice. And they said, "Your bank accounts have been compromised and we need to help you get your money out of your account." So she pulled the money out of her account. Lost $638,000. She pulled from her retirement fund and this year owes $83,000 in taxes because she pulled from that fund. Now, if you order something and you don't get it, if the credit card company, you know, you order and you order through your credit card, the credit card will pay you back. Banks are insured, some $100,000, $200,000, depending what bank you're at. But if you go physically pull money out of your accounts, you're not getting compensated back for it at all. The credit card companies, you call and say, "This was a scam," they give you your money back. You call and say, you know, "I bought something. I never got it." They'll give you your money back. But if you physically go to your bank accounts and move them to an account that the supposed Department of Justice told you to do, you're not getting that money back. I felt, I mean, I don't have that kind of money, so I couldn't imagine. And she was in good spirits. And not until they told her, "Well, you're going to need to sell your house." Because now they've gotten, you see that on TV, so they play into all of that. On TV, they say you can, they can get your deed and they can get this. That's what they played into with her. And she was trying to figure out how she could sell her house to her sister and then buy it back so she'd have her house back. And then all of a sudden, something just clicked. This is all a scam. The whole caboodle was a scam. Every bit of it was a scam. And she's out that kind of money. Horrible, absolutely horrible. The sweepstakes lottery, they say you won. It's too good to be true. If it sounds too good to be true, it is. The investment scams. We all have heard of those. Well, if you invest with this, it's kind of like the Ponzi thing, but there's other investments. You're going, you know, Bitcoin, don't ever do Bitcoin. This same woman I was telling you with the $638,000, she was dropping money off at the Bitcoin machines. They're outside of like convenience in these little local stores, which I never even noticed them. And that was another way. The investment scams, the family caregiver scam, non-delivery of product. We just talked about that. There are so many scams out there. It's sad that people, and I explained to you about the emergency scam. We've been in an accident. You need, we need money. It's your grandchild's voice. Home improvement scams. That's why I tell people, "Call the Council on Aging." We know they're legitimate businesses. We call and check on them. If you need a business, call on them. Or if you are a business yourself, call the Council on Aging and be put into their resource database. So maybe one of your kids or grandkids or neighbors, tell them, say, "Hey, you're a good business." Get into the Council on Aging's resource database. That way, we're giving their name out. It's a great way to get your name out if you are a business and you're legitimate. The utility scams. I got a call a few months back on that one. "We're coming to your house to, excuse me, we're coming to your house to turn off your electric." I said, "I paid my electric bill." "Well, it's not showing in the computer." But it was making me nervous because they were getting closer and closer. "Oh, we're 20 minutes away. We're 10 minutes away. You need to pay us." So I asked for the manager, then I asked for another manager. And I realized that third manager was the first guy. Now, one of the things I do is when they call, and I had one guy said, I said, I tell them, "Yeah, I've had so many scam- and I had one guy said, I said, I tell them, yeah, I've had so many scam calls that the FBI is tracking my phone line, and you'll usually click. Only one guy said to me, I'm not afraid of your government. And that gave me like goosebumps. It was very creepy. I talked about that intelligence, artificial intelligence. It is amazing. So I always tell people, have a code word with your husband, your children. I don't care, pickles or paper or whatever, pick a code word. So if that, that person calls, and you say, what's the code word? They're going to hang up because then you're going to know it's really a scam. Very scary. I personally went through where I, for $64,000, it was the day after 9/11, where most of the country was mourning. I got a phone call. This is a long of a short story. Randall Park Mall said, are you shopping at the mall? I said, no. He said, I knew it wasn't you. She got diamonds. Nine, I had good credit at this time. It really was, I think to myself, it didn't pay off to have good credit. $9,000 loan. She got electronics, furniture, couldn't figure out how to not have it delivered to the house. The Secret Service were involved. This was a RICO charge. The police and the Secret Service said to me that if you're driving around with your kids, your kids are going to be taken. You're going to go to jail until you prove that you're who you are. It was horrible. The trickle-down effect was absolutely devastating because there was nothing I could do. And unfortunately, the government doesn't say, oh, here, we're going to help your credit. We're going to do this with the credit bureaus. We're going to do that. We're going to help you get. It doesn't work. I couldn't get another loan, couldn't refinance. It was just terrible. So I, fraud is one of my passions to, if I can just, if you don't know, call and find out. Call the Better Business Bureau so you can find out if a business is legitimate. Phone calls, hang up on them. If it's important, they'll call back. If you call and initiate a call and want to give your information, you know who you're calling, you've checked them out with the Better Business Bureau, that's one thing. But anyone that calls your house, do not give information. I would say probably 80% of them are scams. I mean, I don't have that actual percentage, but most of them are scams. But I tell you, when I told, started telling them, and the FBI is tracing my line, I get very few scam calls. My neighbor, he's like, I've got 20 today. I'm like. Also, Medicaid and Medicare fraud. Check your statements. Even though Medicare's paying, or maybe Medicaid's paying, make sure it's correct. Just don't, just throw it in the drawer because you know that you don't have to pay it. Check your statements. Make sure your medical, dental, and vision services are all billed correctly, your prescriptions. Don't pay for, if you're getting generic prescriptions, make sure they're not charging you for full non-genetic. It's illegal to bill for regular prescriptions when they're generic. You can make your fraud report. Again, all of this is, is here. One of my, one of my favorite, non-favorite stories is I used to have a psychiatrist that came, and he throws hat on my desk, and he'd go do his thing, and then he'd say, what do you want me to do? I'd tell him what to prescribe. I'd tell him what to do. I should have known that. So I get a bill for one of my patients, and I look at it, and I said, well, that's odd. It was for 45-minute psychosocial services, meaning that he did counseling to her for 45 minutes, and he billed her. So I called the doctor up, and I said, I have a bill for one of my patients that you counseled her for 45 minutes. Well, yeah. I said, what did you do? Go to her gravesite? Because she passed away two months ago. Called another doctor. He left the country. So I've seen so much, and it's scary. You know, people make money off of all of this. Identity theft, you can see some of the steps to prevent it. We talked about a lot of this. Don't give your information. Just don't. Also, you want to look for the security key when you're online. Don't feel obligated. I, when I go to the doctor, I don't fill out my social. I fill out my, put my husband's social on there because he's the one that I don't even, I always say that if he ever signed his own name, they probably think he was the fraud because I do all the papers and signing and all of that. But you don't have to fill out everything. If you're not the person that the insurance is under, you don't have to put your social down. You don't have to fill out every single thing on a form. The Better Business Bureau, like I said, you can call them before you do business with anyone. And you can also remove your name and number from mailing and telephone list by calling Opt Out. You can call the direct marketing. There's their address. Again, I have all this information. You can report fraud, Federal Trade Commission. I would start with your local law enforcement, then Federal Trade Commission. You also have all of the credit bureaus. Like I said, these are all in the papers. You don't have to memorize anything. But I encourage that you take all of the papers with you. You might need them. Hopefully never, but you might know somebody that needs them. And this was, this was very disturbing. According to the report, more than 88,000 victims over the age of 60, losses of $3.1 billion in fraud. And that was back in May of 2023. That's horrible. No wonder when we go to the restaurants and, oh, we're short. Oh, you go here, oh, we're short-staffed. Oh, there's not, you know, they say everybody's doing this influence, those influencers on TV and so forth, but I was thinking suspicion that a lot of people are involved in scams and frauds. I do have credit card protectors. I encourage you to grab one. That's when you put your card or your, because they walk by you now and scan your card. So technology has been a great thing for all of us, especially when it's working properly. And technology is great, but it's also allowed the scammers and criminals to get a hold of information and do horrific things with them. So they can walk by you and scan. There's like an RC, what is it called? NRC on your phone. You could turn that off so it's not easily scammed, scanned, and then they scam you for stuff. But I do have the credit card protectors that you, you know, even if you're not using a, you're just going maybe somewhere where you're not carrying a lot, and you just have your credit card, put it in the case. And if someone's walking by you and you're in a public place, a crowded area, they can't, they can't scan your card. Kind of like this. I'm feeling like this sometimes. And a couple of other things. We do have a lot of elder abuse, and it comes in a lot of different forms. Attorney General's staff works with law enforcement, prosecutors, APS. We have an APS in Lake County that you can report to. It's through Job and Family Services. I have that information up. And with the other epidemic that we have that is a problem, which is addiction and mental health problem, it is in epidemic proportions. So we do see a lot of seniors whose sons or grandchildren are addicts. They're a great person when they're not an addict, but when they are, they're looking for money. And they'll say, I do anything. And they also are master manipulators when you're having addiction, which is a disease. So Lake County Job and Family Services, you can also call in if you think something's going on with your neighbor or a friend, you know, you're suspecting something, can call in anonymously. But unfortunately, addiction is a huge problem. We have a huge homeless problem. A lot of the mental health problems and addiction is, is part of it. So also, I did bring, if you have medications, instead of throwing them in the garbage or flushing them down the toilet, I have bags that I brought. You could take a couple with you. If you have medications that you don't use anymore or are expired, I encourage you to follow the directions on the bag, throw those in the bag, and then it absolutely disintegrates, and then you could throw it in the garbage. So maybe keep things out of our waterways and also out of the garbage where unfortunately homeless and those that are addicted, if they know that, they'll go through your medicine cabinets. They'll go through, I mean, and sometimes it's not always recognizable. It could be just a beginning of an addiction. It's very serious. But the Lake County Adams Board is amazing. They're in, they're here in Lake County, obviously. And they will direct you. We have Signature Health. We have a lot of help. We have two other facility going, going up in downtown Cleveland, another one in Mentor, which will be inpatient. So unfortunately, even seniors, there's a lot of addiction. And back when oxycodone was the thing, they, and the doctors were prescribing it, they cut it off, and a lot of people turned to heroin. And of course, we've had, what, 46,000? It's, it's bad. But if you know anybody, take a paper. Lake County Adams Board is a wonderful organization that is helping so many with addiction and mental health problems. Also, NAMI is for mental health. We have a huge epidemic of mental health problems, and there are support groups. There is help out there, but a lot of people don't know where to get it. And so I kind of liked him because he's helping the other guy. So I really appreciate all of you coming because I know that all of you will pass it on to other folks, friends, neighbors. And like I said, knowledge is power. So I gave you as much knowledge as I could. And there's a lot of help out there, and there's a lot of resources out there. Now that you know it, you could spread it on to folks that you might know in the neighborhood, in church, or schools, or your kids.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.